You should hear you.
Call this Thompson for the select board meeting to order April twenty first, two thousand twenty-two from the Donald D. Russell meeting room. Would you all please rise for the.
What do we do to the flag of the United States of America? And to the mother for which it stands, one nation under thy invisible liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Patty, would you call the board?
Yes, I will. David Douglas.
I am.
Marie Brilliant, dear Ruth Lyons. Matt Nixon. You by Zoom, okay, Roland Tups. We have a town manager, uh, script, chance, being at table and assistant town manager Walt's also in the audience.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, great. Not much to report tonight. I'll repeat a few things that's been last meeting on April twenty-fifth, Monday at five thirty. Uh, here in Don Russell meeting room and LED light conversion presentation for Thompson provided by. Uh, three different companies, real term energy, affinity, LED lighting, incentive main power to the select board. Many individuals want to hear about it. Uh, main department transportation is still working on the ramps. Uh, they will be performing maintenance work on the exit off Route One South to the one ninety-six West from April twenty-second to May second. That may change if they did work that earlier, but for that period, the exit will be closed. And, uh, we are glad to announce that, uh. Ms. Margaret Thering has accepted a position with tax office and will join our team of acceptance. Uh, in an office. That's all I have to report.
So any questions of the. Update for mall construction, Dennis Cox, DPW.
Evening, uh, Dennis Cox. Evening, Dennis Cox, Thompson Public Works. I just wanted to touch base on a couple of traffic scenarios that's happening in town. Um, right now, the target date for the mall road area is March fifteenth. What's happening there is Jersey Mike's. Their contractor is going to be digging out into the mall road for hooking up a water line. They're going to be doing it. The target dates the fifteenth, which is a Sunday morning. They anticipate it taking three or four hours. The road won't be closed. It'll be only detour. It's going to be a lane shift to one side of the road. So it'll be two-way traffic to the one side of the mall road. And like I say, weather dependent scheduling for the contractor, things like that. But at this point, the target will be the fifteenth of May. I just want to communicate that. Um, the other one, just to touch base because it's something we've talked about a lot is the Elm Street Culver project. Um, the contractor should be moving in around the first part of May. With construction starting in the road itself, probably around the first part of June. But I'll be back with, um, a traffic plan for that because that will involve detouring the road closure. The mall is strictly a detour and won't be a closure. But, um, progress in the goal right now, Ruth, just to share with you is they'll be done and out of there before the first of ours. So the work will be done, the road will be paved back up and sealed up before the, before, before the fair takes off. We're excited about it, but it's going to be a lot of work going on this summer. Thank you.
If anyone had questions, because he ran away. Uh, public comment. Anyone receive correspondence? I can't think of anything. With our two-way. Getting in on things, it's. No adjustments to the agenda, I don't believe. Incent calendar. So we have approval of the minutes for the regular select board meeting, April seventh, December twenty-two. So it's been moved and I'll second it. Oh, oh, sorry, we're sub-agree. Um, all those in favor of that? You know, it is Matt is into so five nothing. Second one, approval to open the polls at eight AM on June fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. For the state primary and MSAD seventy-five budget validation in bond referendum. So election. Burger dot one, open and process absentee ballots on June ninth from eleven AM to five PM at municipal office if needed. And again, polls on election day beginning at nine AM and continuing throughout the day as needed, concluding at eight PM. Appoint Linda Dumont and Brandy Laura as warden for the state of Maine primary election. Extend registrar's office hours on Thursday, June nine until seven PM. Appoint the following individuals to serve as election clerks for a two-year term. List attached. I should have had this. Yeah, list attached. I'm not reading all this. There's a lot of them, right? So it's in a packet. Yeah, it's in the, I didn't just. Go ahead.
On, and I believe it's still the law, but I'm not sure. Uh, so you have to check that. But I wonder when you keep the poll, keep it open for registration one night. How many show up? Number one. And number two, if you advertise with the board audit, you'd advertise in the paper. That it be done during office hours where we're open all day, every day during the week. It can be excused those two hours. It's just a question and.
Especially in these June ones.
Right.
You know, November, maybe it's something to look at. We're not going to, I don't think we'd do anything now.
No.
But I think certainly as we look at these smaller elections. If, if there's a way that we can.
State staff, which already does have it.
Yeah, if there's a way we can do something. Smaller, I mean, November, I don't think you can pull it off.
No, and I don't think you should try.
Right.
Yeah.
When you have hundred and seventy-five people showing up. Worth the work. So. Did anyone still move that or? No, read it. Second group. All those in favor? All right, public hearing twenty-two dash twenty-four. Consideration any appropriate action on all budgetary articles and non-budgetary articles. Nine and sixteen, replacement of the special town meeting warrant. So just as we do with all, um. Public hearings, I'll gavel it open during that. That is the only time the general public could speak to an item. And once we gavel out, it will be strictly a discussion between the board and the finance committee. At this time, so they're right. Right now, we don't have a, uh. Quorum for the finance committee. Should the two others show up, we will, Mike will, I don't know. When it looks maybe Bill or whoever, so you guys will have to. We'll take our votes, you guys take your votes, and that's what we'll do. Provided, but if they don't show, it's not a forum. So if they wouldn't print it, they. That or. They, they don't have any time to meet again. Okay, so yeah, so if, if not, it's what's there, which is kind of what I expect all of it to be, I think. But I shouldn't say that before a public hearing, children. All right, I'll open the public hearing. So we will cover and I'll just go through. I don't think anyone's going to particularly get up. Don't see general public, but I'll just go through. So.
Do I want to tend to you?
Okay, see if there's a question. Um, article four, so as we run this, I usually read each article. And look for any questions or comments. And before we wrap up the public hearing, I'll look again for other questions and comments from the general public before we close out. Article four is to have the town vote to raise appropriate and spend the sum of three million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars for debt service. And that is a. Um, current same number for finance and select board. Three million, three sixty-two, one forty-six. Article five, to see what some of the town will vote to spend for general government under the following accounts and to see what some we town will vote to raise. And appropriate for the same and to authorize the select board to transfer funds from municipal insurance to departments outside of general government. For anticipated employee wage and benefit adjustments. These numbers are the same between the finance committee and the select board, four million, four hundred six thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars. We'll go to six. To see what some of the town will vote to spend for the capital projects fund under the following accounts and to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the same. We are one million, eight hundred thirty thousand dollars for both the select board and the finance committee. Article seven, to see what some of the town will vote to spend for public safety under the following accounts and to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the same. Both the select board and the finance committee are. Three million, four hundred eleven thousand and six dollars. For article seven, public safety being police and fire. Article eight. To see what some of the town will vote to spend for public work, solid waste and recycling program under the following accounts. And to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the same. Public Works Department is authorized to spend funds from this article in support of capital projects. There is a difference here in the two recommendations, the select board recommendation, one million, nine hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Finance committee recommendations, one million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Those differences are. Sixty-eight hundred and seven, sixty-eight hundred dollars roughly in public works. My quick math failing. The difference between the select board and the finance committee is part-time wages in the public works. Article nine, to see what some of the town will vote to increase the maximum property tax levy limit established by state law. I'll be one in the event that municipal budget approved that this town meeting results in a tax commitment in excess of the maximum property tax levy otherwise applicable. Such that the increased maximum property tax levy hereby established will equal the amount committed. The state law, the vote on this article must be written ballot. The select board and finance committee have no recommendation on this because as it stands today. As long as there are no changes, um. At town meeting, we don't even, we can just move beyond this. We don't have to do anything. It's if, um, monies are added, then article nine may get triggered. Article sixteen, C F voters will accept mountain roads to be named Canham Drive as a townway. This was, if we recall last meeting, we talked about, um, non-monetary items. And we held off on sixteen because there was additional information going to be brought forward.
It was finalizing paperwork.
Yep.
Our. Here, you engineer as well as our department director. Home works director, we now to survey and everything's complete, right? Dennis, unless you have anything else to add?
I don't. Projects, projects complete. We're waiting for just documentation.
Right. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we had some spare times. Looking forward. So that is the final items in the. Public hearing. Looking if anyone has comments on those items, the general public. See nothing. I will close the public hearing. And what I will do is I will go through each of those items now. Does anyone from the boards? The finance committee or from the board, comment, questions? Right, you already did. Right. So. Um, I will make a motion to move article four. With the board's select, select board recommendation. Move as a select board recommendation of four million, four hundred six thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars. Motion and seconded. So for the select board, all those in favor? Unanimous. And finance committee will go with that same number, which is what they had moved forward with prior to because of the. Of course, you want to pick your own article, that's article five. No. So now I gotta remember. Yeah, because I flipped the page thinking there was extra stuff. All right, so I made that motion. Do you agree to?
I do.
Remove the second. So it needs to be, well, I read the total, I read the numbers for article five when we were talking for article four.
Okay.
So I'm going to start her over.
Oh.
Change. So article four. I'm going to make a select board recommendation for debt service of three million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars. Still seconded by. All those in favor? Still yours. Now onto that much awaited article five. I will make the motion of the select board recommendation for million, four hundred six thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars. So second. All those in favor? Articles. Six. I will make a. Motion that we go with the select board recommendation of one million, eight hundred thirty thousand dollars. For capital budgets, seconded by Marie. All those in favor? Matt, do you want one that hasn't seconded yet? Article seven, I will make a motion that the select board, we go forward with the select board recommendation. Three million, four hundred eleven thousand and six dollars.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Article eight. I will make a motion that we go with the select board recommendation of one million, nine hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars. So that's motion and seconded. Before we take that, yeah, we can do it. I can do that. All those in favor? Unanimous. And just for anyone that may be just tuning in at home, there is a difference. Between the select board and the finance committee based on part-time wages out of public works. The finance committee's recommendation of one million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars will move forward. They just don't have a form to make. To change it if they wanted to. I'm going to make no recommendation for article nine. So I don't, um, do we even need to? No.
Stairs.
Yeah. Article sixteen, I will make the motion that we move mountain road to be named as Canham Drive as a townway to be warrant. So we have a second motion and second. All those in favor? Unanimous. That brings us to the end of the warrant for this year's town meeting. May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. We are on to new business. Twenty-two, twenty-five, consideration any appropriate action on the approval of the access and digitalization policy for the Thompson Town Archives.
Is that that, um? The policy we got to get by the town third, uh, myself. Was the policy that the town has long had, wondering what this policy is, maybe what was the policy in the past is it allows. A few or more members to go down to archive your business. Uh, in the previous policy, it stated that the staff member had to escort them. Uh, with this one, doesn't necessarily have to be a staff member. Uh, we put two more people this, just specifically primarily for safety reasons, all those securities that it benefit. Uh, any event gets in the basement. It's a room, which is something had happened to somebody with a illness or injury that at least a person responded to that. So we're looking for the board to approve this policy and so we can get access. History committee, uh, can perform business down in the archives, uh, as well as any of the parties that would like to come in to do some documentation to support.
The, I agree with it. Um, and I know security will be, um, some of those things are valuable. That we've had appraised in certain documents that are the original history says seventeen sixty-four. And I know the people that's loved them, they would be very, very careful and. And the only reason I say that in passing, other small accounts. Pages have been ripped out of birth records and stuff like that, but I know nobody's going to have access to those anyway because they're confidential, right?
That's correct. So the, uh, that particular area, we can fence off. Uh, so we archive the one area. Uh, if this approves, within the budget, we have a security system that we're budgeting for this year. Uh, there'll be a camera added to that area.
So that's good to hear because a couple of things I saw in here, um. I would love for. Because these things are only, they are, they have value. But if nobody ever gets to see them and nobody can ever access down there because they have to have somebody with them and. Um, the value is only so much, right? Is there any, I guess my, one of my things I was going to ask, we are having cameras put in. It sounds like we're already putting it in. Couldn't we do something within the policy that? I think they're going to be down scanning things and working on a computer, I think. Couldn't we do something that you cannot take any personal belongings down, jackets and bags, just walk, just no drink, just walk down. We have that camera on them, so if there was only one person, they could at least still utilize, we could still. Get things done. The camera's going to be there for that added security.
You have like a.
So. I mean, it provided, yeah, I mean.
Often, you know, for the two people, that's just when somebody had a hard time, that person will respond because it's in the basement. Before, we had to have a staff up and down. If that were the case, the clerk or clerk's staff, uh, we're not staff to, to man that that whole project.
So could there be a screen somewhere that if you see a body laying there, you know there's a body? I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Having a camera there, it just helps out. And it, that, that's kind of added that, that we figured if two people down there. That has, it kind of fills a security purpose, but more importantly, for safety of somebody standing there. Otherwise, the staff members are just sitting there, waiting for them to conduct their business.
What is this that I get?
That was what was previous.
Yeah, I know. It, it just seems we're always so, so worried about. Something we get so held up on, just maybe this one either. I, I just, I, it could come to bite, bite you, right? Someone could walk out with a valuable piece and get it up, but we can take some steps to. The staff doesn't need to sit there and watch. They come down by themselves. Maybe they have a notebook out there.
And, and here we don't say this. But to do.
Right.
Chair, um, we do have the chairman of the committee as a ten day.
Okay. And then I'll get to that. The, the last item, my question about was, I think, and I'm trying to, because I never use a printed copy of it. There was a. The town clerk keeps the key. Shouldn't that just be the clerk's office?
Yeah.
It, it's a clerk's office.
Okay, so they can go, someone's on vacation.
Now, if it's just one person coming down. As I mentioned, so the staff, I would have to come down. So in this policy, if it's, if it's less than two members of the history committee. Then there's going to have to be prior notice for the clerk's office or the interment of somebody down there. If two people come, we'll be prior notice, just let us know you're down there.
Just to follow up, um, I, I agree with to have added to that, uh, coats, briefcases, no beverages and things like that because. Even when I first had an appraise, we had, there was some articles and things down there worth of six thousand dollars. And it is the board's. All that archive stuff is the board of Sleipnass responsibility. So I don't disagree with this policy, but I think it could be a little tighter. And I agree with the camera and I, is there a phone down there if somebody did get hurt? You know? Okay.
You want to tell me poison?
Uh, Nancy, Nancy, Chair Rindolph.
Yeah. Nancy, can you hear me? Nancy, you're on mute.
And now can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay. So I'm, I don't know if you want the video. I'm okay without them. Are you okay without the video?
Yeah, it sounds like you. We trust it.
Okay, so I like this idea and I like, um. David's idea of saying the town clerk's office. Or town clerk staff, I don't think we should have just one person because that's just not realistic in the world. Um, I do like the idea of the, uh, camera. I don't think you should require two people there. Um. I don't know if cell phones work down there, but, um, that's a, that's an idea. I don't know. Um. And I have suspect basements, the cellphone doesn't work. Um, the other thing. I do want you to know that you should only have people who you trust to go down there. I mean, you should only have people that you trust to be on committees and therefore you need to still trust but verify. So I agree that, I mean, I think I'm the one that mentioned make certain they don't take bags or anything like that because that only makes sense. Um, I, I have in my business, I sometimes have custody of. Materials that are worth thousands of dollars, artwork that has to be scanned and. I know how to take care of those things. I know, but maybe we need to develop some of that separately, just not necess- necessarily. Anything that's too formal, but something just a written. Instruction on how to handle things that if we're touching paper that's old, we really do need to have gloves. And I actually have some white cotton gloves and I think that's, I didn't even mention that to you, David, but. I do think it is important. Let's make it, let's make it really good. And that doesn't have to be a part of this, but we can just say, here they are. Um, I think I have two pair now, but we can, I can find those. And so that, yeah, the commit, the history committee, if we're using them, we could. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. I think it's great to do this. I think we should be able to have just one person down there. Because when I, when, and I'm going to do the, a, a lot of scanning. I really don't want anyone down there interrupting me while I'm scanning because there, I'm not going to do the right job. Uh, you just need to pay attention to what you're doing and you don't need to have someone saying, oh, look at this, look at this. But anyway, that's my, that's my thought. So I'm going to.
Thank you. That, the, the handling probably maybe we can just put a line in that says, follow the guidelines then.
On the archive, the main state archives.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be part of the policy, but just say, follow the guidelines.
I, and there was, at one time, there was a few pairs of white gloves down in the file cabinet. I can't say how many were there, but. I don't know if, even if they're still there. The other. I don't know if, even if they're still there. The other thing is, uh, I recollect that there was two people. That spent time scanning stuff for the library and a lot of stuff was scanned. I don't know how much, uh, maybe Nancy knows, but. I, but there was two people down there a lot. They'd take the documents, they'd scan them with the scanner and then bring them back. And that was. So the library could have copies.
Anyone else have comments?
Uh, my, I, I have a comment. Um, codes, briefcases, beverages. That, that's something we can add. Um, the guidance for material handling, that's fine. Town clerk staff, as long as we have a separate location. Yeah. The camera, we are going to be putting camera in there for many different reasons. When we make policy, um, where we view policy is, you know, what happens in the future. So when we're not there, what's the best way to mitigate this, to defend something that you say to security? Making sure that things don't get taken or handled properly. Um, that having two people down there is a good idea. It's a good idea for our own liability and make sure if something does happen, somebody's there. If a staff member goes down there, they don't come back to the office. Um, that may not be the case if somebody's down there all day doing.
Right.
That's the reason why I think that that should be as such. They, they come and they, they sign it somewhere. They, they, they check in at the press office. Okay. So they just sign it. But it, but it, but it's. There's always a camera. I think it. Although we trust our people that aren't. This policy's gonna be around, but won't. So.
Be there, I trust.
What if you say it's two people, but. Exceptions. Which are, whatever, if it's a trusted, it'd be. Um, I, I, yeah, let me, let me talk to, to Linda about that. I think that's. Um, but, but that has to be up to a person and some awful, so like, when you said, you know, if only one person. That, that. That potentially. Let me confirm when Linda will pick us back.
Matt, you have any good?
That way you should, I think you should put it there. Two people. That's Nancy, I trust her a bit. I trust her a lot. Yeah, other people that would be there, but. I think for the reasons you stated, two people is good and Linda felt that way, so. That's the input we should have.
Make a motion anytime you want.
I just did. So I, I made the motion.
So. Do you make sure you include these things that there is a point?
Yeah. I make a motion, we accept the new policy for the archives, uh, and document room. With, and with the exceptions that, uh, the town manager is too bad, as discussed tonight.
Is there a second? Motion and seconded. I'm gonna vote against it. I'll say now, I, I just think we're living in a fearful world. And I, at some point, we gotta stop worrying about. Not, not stop worrying, but we can't, we can't stop every situation. It. I don't know. It's, it's someone walking in going into. Or. No, I mean, it's motion debate, just saying. So motion and seconded. To pass the memo, the policy. So. Any of the changes. Without, with the changes reviewed by.
So what's in the policy? The exceptions that we would add to this guidance for material handling policy. Uh, town clerk staff as. No coats, briefcases or beverages. That's it.
Yeah. Sorry.
It's already in there, so unless you want to strike it out.
There's, you, you allow, you play exceptions, allow one person.
That's not in there. So. Central with the town manager to approve.
Yeah, because I, I agree with Dave, you know, there are certain situations where having one person down there is just a problem. Where, where, where the correct. Exactly, just. Subject to. So we've got a motion and a second with, with the two persons. So, anyone else have any comments before we call for the joint?
Hey, I just have a question. Um, I didn't hear all of what Derek just said. Sorry to come in late there, but that last statement, Eric, could you repeat yourself just, uh, summary?
So what's currently in the policy could remain. Uh, we would add following guidance of material handling policy, whatever that would be. We can have that posted downstairs in that, in the archive room. The clerk's staff would have the key and members of the historic committee could check in with the staff members to get the keys. Uh, no coats, briefcases or beverages. And the town, this is in addition to what we just said, the town clerk could approve one person entering the row.
That's not what Ru just moved. Ru, Ru was a two-person. The motion is two people and the second is two people.
Okay, that's currently in the policy. So the first three items.
Right. Did you get that, Matt?
So that's how it's always been done. The only di- difference is what we've got.
The, the difference is what we have here and from the past, we always had a staff member present.
Which would be two people.
But in this case, we didn't have staff personnel. What an improved person.
So we ready to vote? Are we confused enough yet? So we have a motion on the floor to pass the. Policy as written along with those additional three items of manager. Uh, read off. All those in favor of that? One, two, three. All those opposed? Three to. It passes. Twenty-two, twenty-six. Talk about long anticipated. Consideration any appropriate action on the municipal state agreement for replacement of the Frank J. Wood Bridge.
Hello. Good evening, Mark Walsh, Assistant Town Manager. Uh, the state reached out to us a couple of weeks ago and they are hoping to get ready to put the paperwork out to bid soon for the bridge. And one of the things they have to check off along the way is to get their agreements with Brunswick and Topsom to. Both pay for and maintain, uh, the improvements on, say, our side of the bridge for Topsom, Brunswick for their stuff. Uh, and then talk about maintaining the bridge and paying for electricity for the lights. Uh, so we had a joint meeting with M D O T. They presented us with a tax agreement. Our economic development director made a very. Important change as originally the agreement they presented us had a potential for a ten percent escalation. Um, but he pointed out to them that years ago, they had said that our fee would be our fee and the state would absorb any extra cost. They went back, revised, took that out of this agreement. Um, so we are just going to pay the money that has in the agreement. Uh, we talked with Brunswick and we've agreed to split the maintenance of the bridge. Um, the public works director will work out with Brunswick when the time comes, whether we. Follow one direction, they follow the other, or wherever gets there first or whatnot. Um, and then we each pay for our electricity for the lights on our side and we maintain the parks on our side. Which is all what's in here. Uh, so if you are interested in approving this, we would authorize the town manager to. Uh, sign it for the state and they would have one more box to check off. The engineer said, because we got kind of excited, this is me about to go to bid, and she says, kind of depends on the day. Um, depending on who she's talking to at the office, they're thinking about putting it out to bid and not having the bids come back. Until the federal government makes its decision on that one little item that's left. Um, or they may wait, I'm not quite sure which, but she said instructions to me is to get all my stuff ready so that, uh, at least nothing is holding it up other than the federalism.
Any questions? So I will make the motion to approve the M D O T proposed municipal side. Sorry, Matt, I didn't even look up. Go ahead.
No worries at all. Um. I did have a question about section ten, uh, miscellaneous provisions. Uh, part B, it talks about how basically D O T's saying none of our ordinances or laws apply to them or their contractors during construction. And arguably, one of the biggest, uh, rules regarding construction around title bodies and shoreline zoning. Uh, mandatory shoreline zoning has been, uh. The towns basically have the right to develop their own shoreline zone. That's what law says. So essentially what we're doing is. Uh, taking away our ability to really do anything. I mean, the next section, they say they're gonna follow all state and federal laws. Uh, but since they've delegated that authority to the town in terms of shoreline zoning. I'd be really concerned about us giving up that right to be able to say like, look, you guys just dumped a bunch of sand in the river. Or, you know, one of the trucks spilled a bunch of oil. What are you gonna do about it? And they're gonna say, well, you guys gave this carte blanche. Um, by waving on your ordinance requirements. That, way you interpret that, Mark?
This was part of their boilerplate. Um, I guess certainly what you've outlined could potentially happen. Um, we didn't ask them if they intend to do anything like that. I, I can't imagine they would want to deal with the political consequences of that, but. Um, but certainly, I think you raise a point that they aren't going to be subject to two things if we sign this.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm glad he didn't, I didn't, didn't even think twice about it when I read it, but. To, to just exempt them from our, any of our local ordinances doesn't make any sense.
It's still covered by state.
Yeah, but then this one particular one, like Matt said, has been delegated strictly to the municipality. So is that correct, Matt?
Correct. We have our own shoreline zoning policy in Topsom.
Right, right. So the state's delegated it only to us. Um, so they don't have a policy.
The one way I think we keep seeing, and Dennis can jump in, if, if, we like to, in the paving contracts, is they seem to want to be able to get away from any weight limits. And of those contracts we assign, we have to agree that we'd be willing to give overweight permits and things.
Yeah, I. Way. Yeah, I think, I, I think we need to go back and ask about that for sure.
Is that, if that's the only thing you're concerned about, you could move to pass it with the. Exception that, um, they're not gonna make an exemption for our shoreline zoning ordinance. You could take that back to the state. If they balk, then we'll bring it back to you again if they.
Why wouldn't we allow them to do away with any of our differences?
That seems to be pretty frequent in most of our contracts with them, but maybe because every town is so, can be different and they wanna have standards they can put out to bid that they expect and they know what they are.
They specified.
Including, but not limited to. What's people's thoughts?
Well, I would have the same concern Matt does on the, uh, dumping in the river and think that does concern me. But I think we should vote on it with the, that we commend that or discuss it further.
Does anyone have anything other than, are, are people comfortable just, do we get as the shoreline? Item in there or not worrying about any of them?
I guess I could say, I don't suspect this is anything nefarious. This is probably just oversight, but it's kind of like a legal catch twenty-two. Um, when it comes to the law and especially with regards to shoreline zoning and we're talking about major construction, like major construction in. A title body, um, in particular, one that was just upgraded, uh, to a different water quality classification. So I mean, there are. There's a lot of stuff tied to that particular area in terms of, uh, wildlife and, uh, water supply. So I just want to make sure that we have adequate protection. So I mean, if we're able to vote on this tonight and say, look, uh, we agree with everything on here, but we just want some clarification around, um, applicability of shoreline zoning. For section ten, part B. Um, I'm sure that they'll come back and say, of course, you're in, shoreline zoning applies. Uh, we're gonna follow the. The guidelines that you guys laid out in your ordinance, but I'm sure that'll be the answer, but I just want to make sure that it is, that makes sense.
I'd be comfortable though. So Matt, that was your motion. Uh, anyone second that motion? Motion did, pins, seconded. Any further? All those in favor? Did you get that?
Oh, yeah.
Keep bailing me. Consider twenty-two, twenty-seven. Consideration any appropriate action on the appointment of Roger Nadeau to the Topsom Community Center Committee. Uh, we interviewed Roger tonight, another fine candidate, uh. Very interesting conversation that we had, not interesting as in catch your attention, but it was a nice, it was a different interview that we've had to this committee, I think, and it was, it was. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Roger Nadeau to the Topsom Community Center Committee. Motion seconded, all in favor? Unanimous. Executive session, we have two items, twenty-two, twenty-eight. Enter into executive session pursuant to. When M R S A subsection four oh five sixty to discuss labor negotiations. Twenty-two, twenty-nine. Enter into executive session pursuant to thirty-six M R S A subsection. Title one, four oh five, six, nine F, to discuss tax-acquired properties. I make a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Motion, oh, you're late. Motion and seconded, all is in the speech. Should pay for the extra Xfinity and speed.